At seven o'clock, I'd like to motion that Matt Brown run the meeting in the absence of a mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wanted to say here, we'll call the meeting ordered. Wayne, if you could lead us in front of where you are.
Yes.
Good morning, fair play. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for this day, thanking you for your love and your blessings, and thanking you for this opportunity for us to gather together as a city of Walton to talk about the business of the day. Lord, I pray that everything we do will bring honor and glory to you, and I pray for the decisions that are made here tonight and going forward that will always be about citizens of Walton. And I thank you for all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
About missed the chair. Right on the camera.
Can we get a roll call, Devon?
Rose Beach?
Here.
Amy Long?
Here.
Terry Courtney?
Here.
Sherry Gaskell?
Here.
Dan Martin?
Here.
Matt Brown?
Here.
We have a couple announcements. City Hall will be closed for Memorial Day on May 27th. We'll have our caucus meeting on June 4th in council chambers. And we'll have our events planning meeting at 6:15 on June 11th along with the council meeting. Can I motion to approve the agenda?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then we need approval of the minutes for April 2nd, 9th, and 16th.
I would ask, rather than approving the minutes tonight, that council considers presenting the minutes to the people and that perhaps we table this for our next meeting for approval. There's been a concern that perhaps not everyone's aware of what was in place in the last meeting. And I just think in the spirit of transparency, rather than motioning to combine and approve that we change our habit, present the minutes either we read them or we present them in writing so that everyone's aware of what's contained in the minutes.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Is that a motion to table all of them or just the last one?
All of them, please. Thank you.
It's okay. Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes. Next up, we have citizen comments. We have Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Brown, citizens, members of council, other stakeholders as well. My name is Kelly Fulmer. As many of you all are aware who have been attending the meetings, my re-engagement, if you will, after many years of willfully being absent from attending meetings, stemmed from the now former mayor and what I consider to be a member of his administration targeting me as a citizen. And the now famous email that I continue to reference was that, you know, I was told to kick rocks. And so, in the spirit of that, and as an evangelist for good government and someone as a multi-generational citizen of the city, thinking that our citizens deserve better than what we've been getting, I would like to first applaud you all as council members for doing your due diligence and following through on your commitment to exercise your oversight responsibility of the executive here in the city. As time has gone on, my theory of this case kind of, in its instant state, was that, you know, it's almost unbelievable in this day and age that what had went on and what I experienced would be possible. Especially in, you know, the age of the news media, the social media, and again, just living in a small community where, you know, everybody seems to be interested in everybody else's business, perhaps maybe to a greater extent than they are on their own. And so, it's been amazing as I have gone through this process, which, again, I'm glad that we are at least through stage one of that. But I don't think our work as either a community or as a council is complete. Again, my theory of the case has continued to develop over several months. And my conclusion is only that those things that were done that have been discovered, which ultimately I'm sure will be outlined, at least in large measure, by special counsel Rhodes's report to the community, was only really possible due to what I consider to be a culture of corruption and a conspiratorial, almost a conspiratorial component on the part of the former Brown administration. And it's a cancer that we've got to uproot and we've got to pull up our root branch. I mean, we can't just, you know, boy, we've done our job, you know, Mayor Brown is now out of office. We've got to get to the bottom of how this has gone on. And it's amazing how certain things just happen to, you know, wash up on my shore. But the fact of the matter is that it has come to my attention just since the last council meeting that we have here with us this evening. And again, these are things that have been alleged. They certainly need to be looked into and verified. But first and foremost, that, you know, city assets have been passed out the back door.
Mr. Fulmer?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Sir, Mr. Duncan, I don't know if this is the proper forum for this. I don't know if you had a chance to read them. But I don't, we're not in a courtroom right now. And I just want to be careful what is said and accused with no chance to defend themselves.
Well, I have provided in written form for the council's review. And I'll be certainly glad to let you all review that information. And I'm certainly available, as I have made myself available, to each and every one of you all to discuss it at your all's convenience. And so, with that, thank you very much. Thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizen comments?
I just had a question. We have time, the meeting kind of wrapped up. Quickly, at the end, you were going to hire a consultant. But you also said that there would be no further investigation by the council. I was confused by that. Could someone explain what the need for the consultant is and what, I believe, was the lady just going to be hired for? How long she's going to be working? What we expect to get from our investment in it?
Yeah. I can address that if you guys are okay. So, back in, beginning of March, or beginning of April would be, after former Mayor Brown rescinded his resignation, obviously, council felt it was proper to pursue an investigation. And, you know, we realized we could use some outside help on this one. Not only Mr. Rhodes from the legal side, but we also needed experience on the city management side. So, we hired an outside consultant. She's under contract until June 30th. Now that the preliminary investigation is being, for the most part, concluded this evening, she has turned her time to focusing on the budget. As most of you guys know, they're involved with city politics or city management. The mayor's responsible for proposing the budget. Obviously, it's council's job to examine that. And there should be a dialogue and a feedback there. And with the mayor's position open for the time being, we didn't want to get behind the eight ball with having a budget ready to go and pass by June 30th. So, she's turned her attentions from the investigation kind of over towards that aspects of it. And if her work concludes early, you know, we'll go our separate ways. But it's not expected to be a long-term thing by any means.
Okay, that's a good segue from that. My other question was, has anyone on the council, have you been discussing filling the city administrative position? Is anyone willing to have Mr. Duncan draw up an ordinance something we voted on so that we can see where you stand as individuals? Or is the city good in form with that? Or where are we on that issue?
I, if you don't mind, that's a great question. That has been dialogue. But given the fact of what we were currently involved in, we really didn't want to give that responsibility potentially to the city mayor with the turmoil and until everything's, you know, pretty much settled. So, there has been ongoing dialogue about a city manager. But obviously, this is so new. We received a resignation last week. And just trying to work through this matter and the potential appointment of the new mayor, that's just been on pause for a moment.
Okay, I kind of appreciate that. But also, again, the budget costs need to be wrapped up soon. And I mean, the calendar, they were clicking by. Just wondering if there's going to be money allotted for a potential city manager or administrator? If the ordinance is drawn up and passed, is there time to get that kind of money set aside in the budget somewhere so that it can be covered and efficiently be filled if the ordinance is passed?
There's absolutely time, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Major Mark?
Good evening, Mr. Fulmer. Nice to be with you all again. Council has a copy of my report, which to the benefit of the audience, there were 947 law enforcement events logged by the sheriff's office in the city of Walton in April 2024. Some of those of note include six 911 hangups. Deputies responded to 22 alarm drops. They handled five attempted murder attempts. They handled complaints. Deputies logged 18 auto accidents. Two of those involved injuries. Deputies logged 18 business checks. They attended the 1231 federal assault services. They handled domestic disputes. They arrested intoxicated persons. Four emotional crises. Two juvenile trouble calls. They assisted 11 stranded motorists. Deputies responded to two overdoses. Nine requests for information. They logged 460 spot checks. Handled 14 suspicious activity reports. Deputies investigated two thefts. One was from an automobile. The other was a theft of an automobile. Deputies logged 30 traffic complaints. Deputies conducted 74 traffic stops. They logged five vacation checks of residents' homes and seven vehicle complaints. We unlocked 18 cars and one one-person call. And all in total, they issued 70 citations and made eight arrests. Are there any questions I can answer for you all?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for coming. Good to see you today. You know, last week we had our Main Street.
Yeah, I was not pressed for that.
Right. I was wondering if we could have more, if there's anywhere that you could say that we have more eyes on Main Street. It's a busier time.
Yeah, and in light of that, I wasn't there for the meeting, but I did know what the topic of the meeting was. And I did a little research. In the last 12 months, we investigated 38 collisions on Main Street in the city limits of Walton. All those were between Chambers Road and the Mary Grubbs intersection. Seven of those have reported injuries. Of those 38, 10 were actually at the Mary Grubbs intersection. So, over 25% of the accidents on Main Street are at Mary Grubbs. And of those 38, one involved a commercial vehicle. And also, on the Forestwood side, over the last 12 months, deputies issued 168 citations on Main Street. But I'd be happy to.
It's so good. It's really good on the.
Anything else? Mr. Fulmer?
Sheriff, is the number of citations that you just relayed to us, is that an increase or is that average or is that below? Do you have a feel for that?
I really don't, sir. I just haven't had a few days to pull together just what information I have.
Okay. And after our brief conversation last week, does it have any more information on possibly, because the Main Street group was here, on possibly an increase in patrols regarding traffic control on Main Street? Were you able to answer any of your questions?
Well, your question was specifically about council paying for the initial patrol for traffic. And I haven't had an opportunity to discuss that topic, but that's just. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council has a detailed copy of our department's report. But just to give a briefing to everyone present, January 1st through April 30th of this year, our departments responded to 568 separate incidents. 273 of those was against city limits. That is 48% of the total call box. For the month of April, we responded to 147 EMS incidents. 22 of those were motor vehicle accidents and four of those was overdoses. Additionally, during April, we responded to 53 fire incidents. Other than the report, I've got a few announcements to make. We are taking delivery on a new brush truck that's been on order. It's supposed to be picked up tomorrow. So, before the end of May, we should have that in service.
What's a brush truck?
It is a pull-drive vehicle. And we've got a skid unit that goes in the back. And it's got pumping capabilities. It carries 300 gallons of water. And so, field fires, fresh fires, things like that off-road, we can take the fire engines there. It's a W in the same, so. Additionally, on the trailer, we have a Kubota. It's got the same pumping capabilities. It carries 100 gallons of water on it. So, places the brush truck can get to, we can take a Kubota and get to those fires as well. The two new fire engines we got on order, they were supposed to be delivered in the June. I got notification that they're pushing the date back to August. The date may change again. So, depending on when those are delivered and they go in service, we are planning to have an open house at the firehouse here in Walton. So, we welcome any citizens and members of the public to come and attend that. We anticipate that is likely at this time. It will be late September, maybe early October. Again, it's all based on the delivery of these two new engines that we're getting. So, you know, I don't have a definite date at this time. I'll let you know soon as I can. The fire department, our board has passed a new budget that I presented for the next fiscal year. That being said, the real property taxes, the tax rate, we are decreasing the tax rate again, $0.02 per $1,000 for residents and businesses as far as the fire tax goes. And something that I wanted to relay that a lot of people probably aren't aware of at this time, but I have been involved as the fire chief and setting the tax rate with the board for four years. It's been through COVID and inflationary costs and everything on the rise. And out of four years, three of those years, the tax rate has been lowered. It's not a like-changing amount, but we keep chipping in a little bit each year as we can. But one year we didn't lower the tax rates, we just looked at it. We are working to try to keep your money in your pockets as much as we can. But again, our operating costs and needs continue to go up as the inflationary costs.
Thank you.
Have any questions?
Just thank you for your mindfulness. I know that our citizens feel overtaxed and we know that the line share pretty much is the school. But again, just thank you for your mindfulness and making that possible.
Sure. And we realize, you know, everybody's hurt financially. And I do realize it's not my money. It's your all's money. And you don't want to keep as much of that in your pocket as you can, as you should. So, doing pretty good managing the finances and making the dollar go as far as we can. Still meet the operational needs and start continuing to grow internally and maintaining apparatus. Additionally, I got two ambulances on order. Ordered one, and it was spec-ed out to meet our needs. And it was a total cost of $315,000. That does not even include the cop that goes in it. Ford, or not Ford, I'm sorry. Chevrolet and Dodge made an announcement that they was going to decrease the production numbers of ambulance chassis specifically. So, after ordering that ambulance, I went to my board and told them leave times are going to hit to be three, four, or five years out. So, we need to go and order another ambulance now. Can't wait until we actually need it to order it. And they understood and agreed. In three months' time, the same exact ambulance went up from $315,000 to $405,000. So, you know, cost of this stuff is continuing to grow. Ambulance we can, keep it as much money in your all's pocket as we can.
Thank you for your diligence there, sir.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for me?
Chief, is the funding for these vehicles just coming out of the fire department's budget? Or are you getting assistance from the state or federal government?
No, sir. Fire department's budget. There is no funding from the state or federal government for that. We're eligible to get rid of that. I do have a grants application in at this time, actually, two of them. One of them is called the Safer Grant. And that is to help the first few years with the cost of adding three additional firefighters. Federal government legislation is looking into at this time to determine if they're even going to continue to fund that grant. So, even though we got the application in, if the government decides not to fund it, then there's no money there to assist us in that way. We have another grant in through the state forestry department. The brush truck I talked about, the skid unit. Well, the skid unit's getting pretty dated. It's still in good shape, but we applied for a grant to replace the hose on it, give it a hose and put on the unit, that type of thing. So, if we get some funding to help with that, we'll be able to, you know, fix a lot of things, update things on that skid unit, get it back to where it is like a brand-new unit, but still to cost quite a bit less than it would be in purchase.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, the engineering report on the High Street Bridge project, as you've got to call, the two intersection plans for pole location are subject for review. I talked to the today as a Duke a few weeks ago. He said that the railroad reported them six to eight months for review. So, I haven't even gotten any comments back yet, but I've asked him to keep it going as soon as he hears it. Like, on the negative side, we can't really, kind of had a new pass with the state on getting noticed a bid until we get that pole location addressed on the road. On our roads, our road projects, we had the bid opening last week for the 2024 resurfacing. We got two bids back for a regular blacktop. They were a little bidder at, I just shy, $174,000. And the asphalt had the other bid at $180,000 change. Regular's bid was about $10,000 under the underestimate, so we're good there. So, you know, council's authorization, you know, based on the work they've done for us in the past, I'd say we should deal with that contract directly. Also, Jerry and I have been in touch with Humphrey Concrete to do some sidewalk repairs around the city. A couple locations on Pintop, the Stevenson Mill where they did the water patching and School Road. The total of those was $11,132. Thanks to you guys for approving those. With the turmoil of government right now, we can go ahead and get that moving. They expect they should be able to get started. That will happen within the next couple of weeks. I typed up the seven minutes from the traffic safety meeting last week in caucus. I provided that to the council. Did you have any questions about any of that before I kind of get into it? So, basically, you know, most of you were in attendance last week. Comments pretty much spanned the entire corridor through Walton. But it seemed like it was mostly concerned around the area by the post office and then the transition on the north side of town from the 50 mile an hour speedway into the reduction. Kind of, you know, wanting to see what to do to, you know, extend that, lower even further. So, really, you know, the next step now is for council to, you know, go through those results and, you know, improvements that were requested by the public and see, you know, which ones we think make the most sense. And then, put together a formal request to send to the state to ask them to, you know, evaluate for if those are feasible on their side of things. I know speed bumps were brought up. Unfortunately, those, the state doesn't allow those in their policy on the state route. So, we're going to have much luck proceeding with those. Speed limit adjustments, that's definitely possible, you know, new signs. I did notice that the crosswalks through the Main Street are a little bit inconsistent. Some just have the two parallel lines, other ones have the crossbars. You know, just making sure those are consistent and, you know, fresh writing that definitely will. And so, some residents had asked about a bypass just to take some of the traffic burden off of Main Street. I know they are doing preliminary design on such a project. But, you know, it would be several years out before anything like that came to fruition. Hopefully, have a public hearing with the city just to present what they have so far and get comments on what works and doesn't work. But then, utility relocation, right-of-way acquisition, all that. And then construction, and that's to be in the budget as well. So, I wouldn't count any time soon. So, there's definitely, you know, short-term improvements that we can look at. And then, oh, there was also a question brought up about on-street parking. The business is feeling like they're competing with residents and customers for limited spaces that we have available. So, the resident has already been the city can look at to, you know, help with that. And then, just a quick note on. And then, uh, just a quick note on our MS four projects. We have the low area between Orico and Berry Rose Extension, trying to, to clean that up and, uh, keep the water kind of channelized into a more defined area where it spreads out in that, that low area. Everybody's aware it's been very wet, uh, in that, that area will stay wet for a long time after every time it rains. So the contractor's been struggling to find a good time to get in there and wrap that up. Of course, Davey's here, I think it's excavator saying several feet in and all of them up, just trying to get in there and scoop it out. So, um, I talked to him earlier, he's going to try to get out next week, but I checked the forecast earlier and it's not looking favorable through the weekend. So I keep my fingers crossed and get several dry days in the road and knock that out. So, any other questions?
I have a question about when you mentioned Pine Top, sir. Is this, um, does that have anything to do with the drainage on the sidewalk where citizens have fallen?
That's right, yeah. Yeah, the location at Pine Top with the bender on the corner is the low location. And there's another on the left and, uh, similar problem. It's just, it's a low point that just stays wet all the time. So, um, both of those spots, the contractor's going to, uh, dredge a little bit of drain pipe in between there to capture some of that water and tide in the worst, uh, current. And we'll close the sidewalk with a better grain of water. Doesn't make it in the pipe, we'll be able to keep it off in the, but it's true.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
So someone here in the city wants to approach any of the others.
As far as parking, Mr.?
Yes, no, I would agree with you on parking.
The, even though Main Street is a state route, they defer to the city to control where any new parking areas are. So, yeah, that's something that we do.
Well, I would tell them that wasn't going to happen, but we'll see. Do you have no parking in the street? All the businesses, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I think I, I guess I know that other, you know, like they gave up last week. There's not enough on-street parking between the, the business owners and employees, residents and customers.
My employees, we all park here, okay?
You're not the only one that has that, that concern, sir. Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jarrett. We have recently adopted an ordinance that requires the council to authorize, uh, the selection of the bidder for that amount of money. So, uh, a motion would be in order to approve the recommendation of the city engineer.
Yeah, motion to approve, Rigger.
Second.
Yes.
Bruce Beach?
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes. Next up, we got Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero seven. And I would defer to our counselor, I don't know, Bryce or Duncan?
Will me read the resolution at this point? Okay, uh, this is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Walton, Kentucky, approving a report of the findings of the City Council's investigation regarding Mayor Gabriel D. Brown. Whereas KRS eighty-three A one thirty thirteen, sub- paragraph thirteen, provides that the City Council shall have the right to investigate all activities of city government. And whereas on May the seventh, twenty twenty-four, the City Council through Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five directed its special counsel to prepare a report of the findings of the City Council's investigation regarding former Mayor Gabriel D. Brown. Now therefore, in consideration of the foregoing premises, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Walton, Kentucky, section one, that the City Council of the City of Walton, Kentucky hereby approves its report regarding its investigation of former Mayor Gabriel, Gabriel D. Brown. Section two, that said report is attached here to and incorporated here in by reference. So, um, it would be appropriate to discuss and, uh, and vote on that, and you can do that by motion. And, uh, I, I would note that Bryce Rhodes is or was here.
He's over there.
He's right there. He's waiting for you.
Yeah, so I would defer to him on the context, in the context of the report.
Members of council, the report is in front of you. I think we've all had a chance to review it. If it's approved, I just want to say generally, um, just because I know a lot of people are interested in this. I would be happy to email this to anyone tonight, I would post it on the city website in the morning. If you're a member of the media that I've spoken to before, I have your email address and I'll send that out at the end of the meeting. If anyone else is interested, please just see me after the meeting and I can also get that to you as long as council is fine with that. So, you know, whether, if there's any discussion or questions, I'm happy to help with that. If not, then I think approval would be in order.
May I ask? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Terry.
At a high level, the summary, can you share that with the audience? Can we?
Sure. Mike, could you give the, the kind of summary, the road and wall points? Would that be probably the, and then I can just answer those a little bit? So, um, essentially council considered charges against Mayor Brown before he ultimately resigned. This report is essentially a summary of what those charges would have been. And I'm happy to just kind of quickly go through those. And like I said, the full report's available after it's approved. But, yeah, the summary is that, uh, former Mayor Brown appears to have used a city-issued gas card for personal use or otherwise allowed it to be used that way. Former Mayor Brown kept the city-owned vehicle in his possession for a little week after returning from city business and abandoned the vehicle outside of the city council members' residence. Former Mayor Brown used a city plow truck to cure the parking lot of a private business outside of the corporate limits of the city for which he received payment in cash and goods. Former Mayor Brown authorized payments in excess of the agreed contract price with a contractor and failed to submit to submit two charges in orders to city council for approval as was required by that contract, by that particular contract. Former Mayor Brown authorized payment to that same contractor on another occasion prior to the city receiving an invoice for the work performed. And former Mayor Brown authorized payments to that same contractor on a different occasion personally, what means a cashier check payable from the general fund as opposed to the park fund. And former Mayor Brown authorized a total, not all at once, but a total payment of two hundred thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety cents to a different contractor for work performed at the Owens Park Lake project without properly making the newspaper advertisements for bids. That's the high-level summary. The report includes an appendix that has documents that support all those. The appendix also includes a report from the city's consultant, the results of her forensic audit and some recommendations moving forward that if something like this were happening again. I know the city has already moved to implement some of those recommendations.
Thanks.
How's that good?
Making motion to approve?
Second.
Bruce Beach?
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes. Uh, well, next we got council comments, Rose.
Bryce, I'd like to thank you for your work on this and just leading us.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You guys worked with the city on this, it's been an unfortunate situation, but I've enjoyed such possible work here with council that it was resolved.
Thank you. Mike, Amy, thank you for everyone being here. It's great to see our citizens involved in the meeting, so thank you. I'll raise the concern tomorrow night, we were going to meet, uh, it was going to be a special meeting for potentially the appointment of the new mayor. I believe all of council finds that it's very important that everyone here on council is able to attend. It's, it's not a decision that we should make without one of our teammates here. So there's a potential conflict for, for one of our council people. So I was just going to open the conversation to see if potentially a better day next week, uh, could, could be scheduled.
Yeah, obviously, that's me, I, I'll be working tomorrow night. So, uh, I know we talked about it, it's our special meeting that maybe Monday would work. Rose, you can't do the rest of the week, right? Thursday?
Monday's good here.
Monday's okay with me.
Monday works for me.
So the, the agenda was published, I, I guess, right, Giovanna, for tomorrow night? So there will not, there will not be a special meeting tomorrow night. We'll move that till Monday at seven. Can we update the date on that sheet? And keep those signatures or do we have to print a new sheet?
Print a new sheet, correct?
Well, no, I think you can change it. If everybody is in agreement to change the date on it, you don't have to sign a new one.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
And Giovanna, you'll notify the other candidates that were planning to be there tomorrow. You can get in touch with them.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Giovanna.
Sherry?
I'm good, just thanks for your support. Hang in there, we'll get it.
I don't have anything tonight. Glad to be through this and, uh, hopefully we all sleep a little better in the evening.
Alright, thanks everybody for coming. It's always good to see your old faces, I appreciate it.
Mike, give a comment?
Counsel, can you, uh, can you announce some of the candidates for the mayor's position?
Giovanna?
I have Dan Martin, Amy Long, Terry Courtney, Eric Tungate, Bruce Blumer, and Mark Carnehan.
Yeah, yeah, Monday we'll, we'll meet with them and like we've done in the past, we'll have a question and answer time if there's anything we want to ask specifically. And then, uh, then we'll anticipate voting that evening, I think if everything goes right.
Primarily, it's been an introduction so that if you're interested, that if, if there's something that you didn't include in your letter, that you can stand and introduce yourself and, and share anything that you would like. Along those lines, and thank you for asking that question, um, a citizen had asked me previously, will there be an opportunity for citizen comments? I understand that the discussion would be in closed session, correct?
The discussion would be in closed session. The way it normally happens is you would give the opportunity to each candidate in public, in the public part of the meeting, to speak. And then you would, uh, go into closed session to discuss the pluses and minuses of the, of the individuals. And then you would come back out and vote.
Thank you. And so with that, if there are citizens who are present and they want to weigh in or they have an opinion, are they allowed to do that?
As long as it's not a dirty laundry airing.
Understood.
That's, that's why you go into closed session.
Yes, sir.
So you keep that stuff in closed session. So if anybody wants to put forth a candidate, see and speak on behalf of a candidate, that would be fine to do in public. If you have something negative, just hold it.
Thank you.
So we need to wait till next week before seeing citizens comment about recommendations or anything like that?
Well, I, I believe if you feel a certain way this evening and you want to say something, and I don't believe any of us would stifle you in your opinion, if you're not able to make it Monday, then, you know.
Yeah, I'll be like mad, I gotta do it. I wouldn't like say, I mean, Mr. Carnehan, uh, he had previously been on council and also served for mayor for a few years. He retired, now I think he's retired. I, you know, I would, I would suggest that council look at him, uh, and vote full time. Maybe intern, or if you want to run for mayor job, acting as chairman, but council, I would suggest to, that you look at him more. He's somebody that's retired and can, he knows about budgets, he's been on budget before. Try to make this even forward, but some of them sound wrong at the time.
Appreciate your input. And that reminds me too, if, um, there's a deadline in June for anyone who is interested in putting their name on the ballot for the mayor position as well as council. All council positions will be open and available, um, so please get involved. The more people on the ballot, um, the better, that's how, how I feel.
I have a question.
Mr. Carnehan mentioned last week about rerouting traffic through, make, away from Main Street. We have thriving businesses on Main Street, what, that would highly impact us. If you reroute traffic.
Are you asking me a question?
Yeah, I asked the city council to.
Yeah, I, uh, I, I put that forward because a lot of the traffic that comes through town comes from points east uptown and they're headed through the west side. Probably, I guess, you know, most of the traffic that comes through town doesn't stop anywhere in town.
That's, that's not true.
And if they're, if they are headed to a specific business, those businesses are pretty specialized businesses. I believe that they would continue to, anyway, irrespective if there was a way to go around it.
I disagree with that because a lot of people drive through and say, oh, there's a porch or there's a bakery or a hair salon or a golf rink. You know, people see that and it brings in business.
Yeah, I agree. That could be looked at, I think that, that could be studied more, right?
Yeah.
I just wanted suggestions for, uh, our neighbors who live on Main Street who are concerned about real problems.
But I think if you put police there, monitoring traffic and, and take it, believe me, I know. Maybe slow some of that down, give you tickets, know that's a, a traffic. You ready to get a ticket, you fly through there.
Yeah, that was why I asked Sheriff Bart last week about, maybe the city paying for overtime if that's necessary to have an officer out here. In my other discussions with other officers, they said you can sit here all you want to, it doesn't really matter. Not that that shouldn't be done, but that's what I've been told. Many of Sheriff Bart's comments.
I think if a sheriff is sitting out there and sees somebody going fifty-five down a highway, they're on, they're on a phone call.
Well, the idea is for them not to be sent, right?
Barb, you have a question?
I think I recollect, I was at the meeting last week and I think you were talking about the traffic flow and what have you. And you had to table some people's comments because you ran out of time and you told them that they'd be able to speak tonight. Am I correct in that?
I think we completed the road aspect. I had to cut Jane off, um, because, uh, her comment wasn't pertaining to the road and we didn't allow that in the agenda. So that's why I asked Jane to come back this evening. I might have missed something, but, uh.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.